Good evening. This regular meeting of June 10th, 2024 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Jacob Itzkazire. Jones.
Parks.
Here.
Sancy.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
We're missing the kids already.
Yeah, we're missing the kids.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 13, 2024, and the special meeting on May 29, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May 13, 2024, and the special meeting on May 29, 2024, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. So, anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We ask that you come up to the podium, state your full name, your connection to the district, and limit your comments to three minutes using our handy timer.
All right, I see none. I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and move to regular session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, that moves us to Administrator Retirement Recognition from Superintendent Hawkins.
Good evening, everyone. So Shirley Horstman, would you like to come forward for us tonight? I feel like we should give you a round of applause or something. So many of you know Shirley already, but Shirley is our Executive Director of Student and Support Services. And Shirley's been at the district office for the last, or in the district for 24 years. So started as a math teacher. We've, we're learning all these fun facts about Shirley as we go through the retirement role here. The one fact that she shared is that Brian Cool was once in her math class, so.
How did he do?
And his math skills are fantastic, by the way, so.
Great.
That's great. But you know, Shirley, with her retirement, not only takes a lot of years and knowledge, but it really takes a lot of relationships. And that's one thing that Shirley has done so well throughout her career at the Dubuque Community School District. And not only relationships within the schools, and our principals, and our teaching staff, our counseling staff, and many different initiatives that she has started and been very successful in our district, but also with the community. Shirley has a very good touch with our community and lots of connections, and has done lots of really great things for our students and staff and families in Dubuque Community School District. And so, we just really appreciate everything you've done for the school district, the families, the community, and we're going to miss you greatly. So, congratulations, and I hope, she's going to love retirement. She loves to travel. She has these things called grandbabies that she wants to hang out with, and, and so, but Shirley, you will be greatly missed in our district, and I wish you the best. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you, Shirley.
Speech, 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 speech. Speech, speech, speech.
I would just say, like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve. It has been my pleasure for the last 24 years to get up every day knowing that I was going to come to a district that has so many good things going, not only for students, but for the parents of our community and the staff. And I feel so privileged to have been able to work with the community in meaningful ways, and ways that really make a difference for our students. And that's ultimately what it's really about. When I think back, I'm proud of many, many things, but the deep connections with the staff of the schools, students and families is something I'll take with me for a lifetime. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Just to use a little school board privilege a little bit, I, I will say, I've been with the city 12-plus years, and in those 12-plus years, I've seen Shirley in so many community events, community meetings, representing this district more than you, you could ever imagine. You have truly planted and cultivated the future in this community. Clearly, we have some of the future right here, so I think I can speak for every single board member when I say truly, thank you, and I can't wait to see what's next. I know you're not going to sit still, so. Thank you, Shirley.
I, I would just add to your good words, Anderson. Shirley, both as a board member and as a former colleague, our offices were right next door to each other. What a gift you have been to this district. No one could have worked harder, or more creatively, or more diligently, or more resourcefully to serve the kids of this district, to work with families and community. Your innovation and your creativity, I've recently been having a little reason to work with the Re-Engagement Center. And I remember when you started that, and to see now what it has become, and that's just one thing of so many. You really have been and have given so many great gifts to the kids and the families and the community. Thank you. It's, it's just a privilege to have been able to see glimpses of your great work over the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. You've made such a big impact.
And Shirley, as a recent retiree, I'm myself, we're going to miss you so much, and please come visit us whenever possible, but you are going to love every minute. And you're not going to look back and say, oh, I wish I wouldn't have quit.
That's a strong word.
Whitman's making us jealous.
We left on good terms.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Shirley. So, I believe there are a few board salutes around the table.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I, it, it was my privilege to attend all three high school graduation ceremonies this year. The Dubuque Online School, Senior Hempstead. So I'm delighted to represent the board in thanking everybody who made possible these three wonderful graduation ceremonies. What a cast of thousands it must surely take to put together these large stadium full of, of celebrants there to, to wish our graduates well. So certainly thank you to school administrative teams, counselor teams, buildings and grounds, communications, technology, activities, and so many more. It, it is truly a community. Our district joined as a community to make that all happen. Certainly, Amy, thanks to you and, and your team. It was a gorgeous day on the Saturday of graduation. About 75 degrees and a breeze, and whoever did chose the weather, they are permanently in charge of the weather. It was great. But it was a beautiful day to celebrate the class of 2024, as they became the newest graduates from the Dubuque Community School District. And as a board, we wish them every good thing and every success as they take their continued steps forward in their personal journeys. So, congratulations to our graduates. And to all those teachers and other educated, parts of the educational team who made their journey possible, so, thanks.
Thank you.
I also have a board salute. District track meet just took place in mid-May, so I'm going to give you a summary of our outstanding efforts and winning medal winners at state. For the Hempstead girls, Kayla Anderson, Mallory Tompkins, Aleah Osterkamp, Keely Lightson placed first in the distance medley. In the 800 meter run, Keely Lightson placed first, and Julia Gale placed fourth. In the 3,000 meter, Julia Gale placed second. In the 1,500 meter, Julia Gale placed second, and Keely Lightson placed fourth. So for the Dubuque senior girls, we had Campbell Dupow placed seventh in the high jump. For the Hempstead boys, McKay Fern, Zach Johnson, Owen Lightson, and Charlie Drisco placed fifth in the four-by-eight relay. John Maloney placed eighth in the 3,200 meter run. And for the Dubuque senior boys, we had John Fitzpatrick, Michael, McKell, I'm sorry, apologize for not saying some of these names properly, Hall, Jaden Arnold, and Nick Lamb placed seventh in the four-by-100 meter relay. John Fitzpatrick, Zachary Hyer, Garrett Schumacher, Jaden Arnold placed seventh in the four-by-four meter relay. Jaden Arnold placed sixth in the 400 meter dash, and Nick Lamb placed eighth in the 100 meter dash. And in a different category, the girls para category. Hempstead's Ally Darter placed first in the 200 meter wheelchair, and the 400 meter wheelchair, the 800 meter wheelchair, and the shot put wheelchair. Outstanding. Athleticism with Ally. Congratulations to all these athletes and their coaches who got them to state, helped prepare them, and the great success they had.
I do have one. I thought, is Kobe, Kobe's in the bag, the camera can't see him, but I want to personally thank Kobe and his team. So, this past, or last week, I had some issues with technology, and I messaged him, and was like, hey, could you please help me? I'm struggling. Right away, when I got here, he and his team took care of all of my issues right away. And I know you may think, oh, you're a board member, of course they're going to take care of your needs right away. It's like, no, I, I think that just talks about his leadership, his team's ability to troubleshoot customers' needs right away. So I just want to personally thank you for addressing my needs.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. Always great to hear all the great things going on in our district.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any item a board member wishes to have pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dirk. Dirk was the only board member that was in person at that meeting. And thanks to Kobe and Mike Size for organizing that all of us could be on Zoom, so we could continue and hold the meeting.
It was a torrential downpour day, just in case the community forgot.
Yeah, you got to put context behind that. No other board member showed.
We couldn't get there.
No, we were all, we were all there, just on Zoom, but.
Dirk took his boat.
Yeah.
Or something to get to the forum.
Rode his canoe. So he safely made it back home, too. So thank you, Dirk. Okay, first of all, the City of Dubuque, the Tiff Extension. Jill Connors and Rick Dickinson from the City of Dubuque asked that the district approve the agreement providing for a COVID-19-related extension of the South Point Housing Urban Renewal Area Division, that's south of town by Key West, of revenue for the period of three additional years to facilitate the construction of needed housing. The board has agreed to continue that for the three years to extend it. We had a board presentation from Tim Oswald. Tim Oswald of Piper Sandler shared with the committee the timeline needed for the district to issue school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds, and the amount of $14,995,000. Issue for the school infrastructure sales and service and use tax revenue, I'm sorry, for the purpose of providing funds to build, furnish, and equipment, a new gym and classroom addition, secure entrance, and related remodeling and improvements, and site improvements to the Eisenhower Elementary School, and to remodel, repair, improve, and equip Irving Elementary with HVAC, lighting, fire alarm, intercom, mechanical, electric, and plumbing improvements. There is a request to purchase five 38-passenger replacement school buses at an estimated cost of $790,195. And we had some staff contracts renewed, the review of the employee agreements, custodials, is a 2.51% total package, salary and benefit increase, the non-bargaining employees. To keep in line with the other employee groups, it was approved for a 2.51% total package increase is being recommended, I'm sorry, I said to approve, we plan on approving when we read the motions, recommended for non-bargaining employees and administrators. And a 2.54% total package increase for paraprofessionals, and a 2.51% total package increase for non-bargaining secretaries. We also got updates on district projects. Senior High School Phase Two, the budget and timeline remain unchanged. Project is 99.5% complete, should be completed by the time school starts. Sageville Elementary School solar project, construction was complete, and connectivity issues are fixed, and the system is providing power. Lincoln Elementary School Wellness Project, pre-construction meeting is complete. New equipment will arrive in July, weather permitting, and will be finished by the fall of 2024. Preschool renovation project, interior of the building, painting, flooring have started. Furniture will come in mid-July, ready for school to start in August. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony on September 11th, and we will hold our education facility meeting there, so we can firsthand tour the building right before our meeting. Audubon Playground Equipment Replacement, groundwork by the district will begin, and the equipment will be installed in the beginning of July. We'll work around summer activities, you know, at Audubon to get everything done. And the donated art sculpture will be installed on June 18th. I think we thought it was an earlier date at first.
I think it was actually going to be later, and it became.
Oh, okay, so now it's early on June 18th, that, so hopefully people will notice that sculpture and take a drive by the school. Eisenhower Gym Additional Project, the estimated cost, total cost is $6,462,004. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project, project is in the design phase at this time. Consent designs will be, come to the committee when they're finished. And the HVAC components are currently being looked at. Transportation and Siding Replacement, one of our buildings for the buses siding replacement is in need of repair, and a contract with Origin will need to be approved by the June, today's meeting, and to allow, to move forward to do the repair work to this building. Synergistics, Josh Poseyak gave an update on the committee, to the committee regarding summer setback savings. Information was sent out to staff, and starting June 6, summer setbacks with HVAC will start, with options to cool the areas where there's going to be summer school or there's staff in the building. Kevin Kelleher reviewed the bids that came in for the purchase of a $15 million, six-month CD. The bid that, the highest increase rate, the bid that was accepted was 5.32%, and that's from the Iowa School Joint Investment Trust. And Rob Powers stated that there was a, going to be a donation for a little library near Kennedy School, and that, no, we did approve that, that no longer is going to be installed near Kennedy. And our next meeting is scheduled for July 8. Now I have some motions to read. I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with custodial employees presented, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the custodial employees as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the non-bargaining employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the non-bargaining employees as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented. Is there any discussion?
I think Brian Cool was going to give us some more details on that.
Good evening. Since the facilities meeting, the last facilities meeting, we had another group that ratified their contract, so I just wanted to present to you that the, the maintenance group approved a 2.51%. So I bring that to you to vote on, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. I appreciate you and your team working through negotiations. Seems to be, you know, as we receive our funding announcement from the state, it's hard to get our, those negotiations, negotiations started any earlier, so I appreciate the work of you and your team to get those concluded by the end of the school year, so.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2024 bills subject to post-audit by the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize payment of final June 2024 bills subject to post-audit by the board. Is there any discussion? We did tell Kevin we would do that, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries.
And my final motion, I move the Board of Education approve the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Student Activity Fund for athletic safety and protective gear in the amount of $43,318.48, or as determined and eligible as of June 30.
Second.
2024.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the transfer of funds from the General Fund to the Student Activity Fund for athletic safety and protective gear in the amount of $43,318.48, or as determined and eligible as of June 30, 2024. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Whitman, for that report.
You're welcome.
And we're moving on to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. I, I must stand in for our committee chairperson, Katie Jones, who was detained at work, and we appreciate what she's doing at work, so we're sorry to not have her here. Educational Programs and Policy Committee met on May, on June 5 at 4:00. And as usual with that committee meeting, it's divided into two sections. The Educational Programs section, which is focused on the programs and instruction and educational outcomes of our teaching program and our learner, learners. And the second is to work with policies that come forward. We take a chunk of policies every time and review and revise them. So, first, the educational programs, we were delighted to have Kobe Culbertson, who's our Chief Technology Officer, and Joe Maloney, the Director of Activities and Athletics. They brought to us the plan for starting a new activities program in the area of esports, and the board was very receptive to that and enthusiastic about it. I was interested to, to hear the list of reasons that we would take on a new activity, esports activity at this time. There, a survey was taken of our high school students, and 100 students in the very first survey indicated a high level of interest in jumping into and being involved with esports. And we know that the engagement of kids, when they're a student and connect with an activity, or some sort of a, an act, an active-based program, benefit in terms of their whole educational programming and their attendance. Much being done, Shirley, I know you've done a lot of work trying to do the post-pandemic, the pandemic took a toll on our attendance across the country, not just here. And those activities are so critical, this is another example of how we might engage kids, get them back into school on a regular basis, so their learning benefits as well. The other thing is esports doesn't depend on certain abilities or talents. It's not gender-specific. It's, it's open to everyone, and we know that other schools in Dubuque do not offer it, so we're kind of tickled to be able to start that program and have that available for high school students as an option. So Kobe and Joe are, are working to put together the launch of that, which means they're out working for funding. They've worked with the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools, they're working with other agencies and groups who might offer to support this new activity in, in a funding sort of way. And they're working with the Dubuque Esports League called DEL, Dubuque Esports League, to help us be a partner with them to be able to get this launched by next fall. So, pretty exciting. We know that it could really help us with that priority initiative in our strategic plan to get more students involved in extracurricular activities, so we're delighted about that. We next heard from Lisa Tabakhors, who's the Executive Director of Elementary Education, and she gave us an update on a new plan for elementary schools' start and end times. We have 12 elementary schools. Their times over the years have been staggered for when school starts, when school dismisses. I think it's a very interesting idea to gain efficiencies in transportation by setting up three schools into each of four clusters, having the same start, same end times. Transportation is more efficiently going to operate that way. And additionally, it's an opportunity for our teachers to collaborate across buildings. We have something we used to call PLCs, Professional Learning Communities, they're now CLCs, Collaborative Learning Communities. And teachers within those start-and-end-time clusters will be able to collaborate across school-to-school lines because their start-and-end time is the same. So, we're pleased to hear that. Ms. Tabakhors also brought us information about a program called Summer Champ Camp. Say that 10 times real fast. It's for families who need help with summer childcare and who want some enrichment opportunities for their kids. And so, it's going to be located at Prescott Elementary School, sort of a central campus for many of our kids. And it, Summer Champ Camp will engage our kids in a different way, at a different pace, with the goal of maintaining or growing their summer learning this summer, in both reading and math. We know something called summer slide. As kids leave us, head into the summer months, it's so easy for what they knew and could accomplish at the end of the year to slip a bit. So, all of these things are, are important ways to try to mitigate that potential concern. Then likewise, Lisa gave us information about the Summer Reading Academy. Tammy, thanks again for all you've done to make that possible. This is, how many years now have we been doing it? 10? Maybe? Too many, I see. No, no, never enough. We focus on children who have completed first grade going into second grade, and again, trying to, to avoid that summer slide, in that, in this case in particular, in reading and language arts. That'll take place between July 8 and August 2. And three sites for that, Prescott, Audubon, Table Mound, but all children who have finished first grade are welcome and invited and encouraged to attend. At the report last week, 288 ending first graders were already enrolled, and I suspect that number is even greater now as we move forward. So, if you haven't signed your ending first grader up, reach out to somebody over here, and we'll help you make that connection. Lastly, we worked with the policies before us, we had six policies. Topics of physical education, which is on Annual One, records, insurance practices, and bonding for certain employees of the district. Our next meeting will be July 10, 4:00 in this room. We invite and encourage any members of the community who'd like to be a part of that to come and listen to the things being talked about. We have lots of conversations, much more so than you see us having at a board meeting, so we invite you to come and participate. That's my report.
I think we have one motion.
We have one motion. I don't know that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I move that the. I move that the Board of Education approve the strategic plan as presented because much of our focus at that meeting was in Superintendent Hawkins bringing us a good look at our bright, shiny new strategic plan. Are you going to talk about that?
Yeah.
Let's second the motion.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the strategic plan as presented. Have some discussion about this?
I would love to have some discussion. So as you know, every five years, the district has been in the habit of updating our strategic plan. And so last year was my first year as Superintendent of Schools. And so the strategic plan was to sunset. And we decided, or the board was kind enough to say, this is your first year in your superintendency. Let's extend the super, or the strategic plan one year. So we, we followed that plan for six years with the goal that this school year, we would work to develop the new strategic plan for the next five years, which is 2029, which seems a long ways away, doesn't it? So what we've done is, we've done some retreats with the school board to talk about what are things are we looking for, for the next five years? What are the goals for the district? What are the goals for the community? And what do we think education's going to look like in five years? And, and those important factors. We then took some of those ideas, and we took those out into our school districts. So we met with district leadership teams. We met with teacher leaders. We met with school building leadership teams. We met with parent association, PTO. We met with community members and made sure that we've got voices. We met with student groups. Our Student Equity Group were really a voice in, what do you think the next five years should look like in our school district? And so it's very exciting to see, you know, the flash, the final product. But really, what it's talking about is that our district is going to be ready for you. We are going to be ready for each and every child in a variety of ways. When we went out and talked to different groups about what makes Dubuque Community Schools unique, and some things we heard was diversity. There's great diversity in our school district that we can learn from others each and every day. We talked about opportunities. There are so many different opportunities for our students, whether that be academics, you know, what courses they choose, which pathways they choose, whether they want to take a career pathway or a college pathway. They have those options in our district. And then also just extracurricular activities, between athletics, fine arts, robotics, STEM. I mean, we have added, esports is a new one now coming forth, that we really have many different opportunities for our students to participate. See if they like that, see if they can be engaged in that. And then also to connect with other adults in our schools. So as you look after we approve this, this will be something that we're going to go on the road with to really promote in our community. Our four pillars of student achievement and development. Family, community, family and community engagement. Employee excellence, obviously retention. And recruitment is very critical at, at a time when it's, it's sometimes hard, difficult to find employees to come into our district. And then effective resource management. And as we've been talking about, even with us going out for a bond referendum, we are always looking at efficiencies and ways that we can make sure that we're fiscally responsible in our district so that we can make best decisions for our kids moving forward. There's then action steps that are both student-focused, family-focused, staff-focused, and then community-focused. And then the next page is really the outcomes. What do we want to see our students achieve in the next five years? And some of those areas are attendance. We really want to focus on students attending school, being there on a daily basis, and knowing the importance of them being in our buildings each and every day. We're going to focus on academic growth. So in the past strategic plan, we worked on proficiency, which we all strive for, all of our students to be proficient. But we also want to focus on their growth because any growth that a student has from the beginning to the end of the year, we want to be able to recognize that and celebrate that growth, not only with the student, but with the staff as well. Participation, we're really going to focus on, we want students to be connected to school. We want them to get involved in at least one activity in their timeframe, whether in either our middle or high schools, and hopefully both. High school graduation intentions is one of our outcomes. We really want students, when they leave us, to know what's next. You know, so that they've had good guidance, good support. They've had opportunities that they maybe got to try a variety of things, that they know that this is something I don't want to do, but this is something I really like to do. And so what are those intentions? And we want everyone to feel ready for what's next after high school. And then the last piece is our graduation rate. Because in a district, in all school districts, our number one goal is to get students to graduation and get to that finish line. So that needs to be an important outcome that we measure each and every year. And then on the last page of the, of the strategic plan is really about the district. It just, it reads our mission, our vision, and then the board values. And so these are things that the board met about and talked about, and really things that they believe about education. And so we are so excited to kick this off in the fall with some new priority initiatives. As you know, we report out to the board multiple times a year to give updates on how we are accomplishing our strategic plan. We want this to be a living document, not something that we just stick on the shelf. So we want all of our, our families, our staff, our principals, our district leadership, our district, our cabinet team to really make sure that we're making decisions that follow our goals and our strategic plans. So, so excited to bring this out in the fall. And I'm so thankful that hopefully you're going to approve that here shortly. And we can, and we can get going to make the best five years our best five yet. So thanks for everybody's support. And I appreciate everybody's input to make this happen. So thank you.
Any other discussion, board members?
I just think this is exciting just to, to see, to, to hold in our hands. I know it was a lot of discussions behind the scenes to put this together. And I'm ready. You know, I'm ready to create winners within our, our school district. I'm ready to remind the residents that we have an amazing asset that will help recruit, retain people in our community and to create future leaders. Right? I'm, I'm ready, and I'm excited to see how you guys move this forward, so.
Let's go. Let's win.
Yeah, I echo that and just really appreciate the process that the districts has gone through to create this. I know it was a lot of work and that there were a lot of different voices that were solicited and sought out to really give the input and important information for where we're going. I said this at the meeting when we talked about the strategic plan, but a lot of times at places I've worked, not just now, but other places I work too. I'm not picking on my employer. But the strategic planning process is sort of like, not that, not that fun. And it can be draining. But that's not what this is. I mean, people are so excited. We're very excited. There's so much energy and enthusiasm in what this document has because it's not just a document. It's not going to sit on a shelf, like Amy says. It really drives everything that we do. And keeping kids at the center. And so it is fantastic. I'm very proud of it, and I can't wait to show it off.
The one thing that sticks out mostly to me is I love the graphics. I love the easy read of this document. But we're asking for 100% of our high school graduation students to have an intention. What do they want to do after high school? And we're going to help them get there. So that's, what better could we ask for?
All those in favor of approving the strategic, strategic plan as presented? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And the next thing will be that the individual priority initiatives within each of those four pillars will come.
Will come to us. Yeah, and we're going to work on that piece in July, and then that'll come to our August meeting.
August. Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to new business.
Approximately $14,995,000, school infrastructure sales, service, and tax use revenue bonds. Is there any explanation on that? Or?
I think we do.
We have Lisa.
Yeah, I think Lisa's going to come forward.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Hawkins. Tonight, we bring forth a resolution to set a public hearing for July 15 at 5:30 for the issuance of SAVE revenue bonds in the amount, amount of $14,995,000. The bond proceeds will be used for the Eisenhower Elementary School project and provide HVAC for the Irving Elementary School. These projects are a part of the district's 10-year capital improvement plan. This process is different than in the past and was outlined by Tim Oswell at the Facility Support Services Meeting. Do you have any other questions for me?
Just in case people don't know who you are.
Oh.
So, so this is Lisa Demmer. And Lisa is going to be filling our role of Chief Financial Officer in December when Kevin Kelleher retires. So we're really excited to have Lisa join our leadership team and lead our district as a fiscally responsible person, right? There are going to, lots, lots of fun, fun things coming our way. But Lisa, we're really excited to have you join our team and, and welcome. So we, we, we asked the rookie to come up to the microphone tonight. She did wonderful.
Good job, Lisa.
You did a great job.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa.
I move the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date for public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $14,995,000, school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue bonds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposed issuance of approximately $14,995,000 in school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue bonds. Roll call vote?
Bradley?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Itzkazier? Jones? Parks?
Aye.
C and C?
Aye.
Whitman?
Aye.
And the date and time on that again for the community? If they want to attend?
July 15 at 5:30.
Here?
Yep, as part of the board meeting.
Yes.
All right, that motion passed.
I move the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract and salary benefit package as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract and salary benefit package as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome back.
It was in the air for a second.
Thank you, Amy.
We're so happy to give you that contract again.
I move the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, Juneteenth, and authorizing the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the proclamation recognizing Juneteenth and authorize the president and secretary to sign on behalf of the board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And I will read it after we pass the motion, which we just did. Okay. Proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, and Liberation Day, recognizes and commemorates the end of slavery in the United States 159 years ago. And whereas Juneteenth acknowledges the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of Black Americans and is now recognized as a federal holiday. And whereas, the district is continually focused on the important work of breaking down barriers of racism. And whereas, we seek to raise awareness of Juneteenth and other culturally important holidays and observances to foster greater understanding and to celebrate the rich ethnic diversity across our district and community. And whereas, Dubuque's Multicultural Family Center will host the community's annual Juneteenth celebration with a variety of activities from June 14 to 16, and the community is encouraged to attend. Now therefore, I, Kate Parks, on behalf of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education, do hereby proclaim June 19 as an observance of Juneteenth. Signed this 10th day of June, 2024. Very exciting. Be sure to check out Multicultural Family Center's page for all of the different events that they're doing. Several things happening on several different days, and it should be really great. Think of the picnic this weekend and lots of other things going on.
Yeah.
Awesome. I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 1224761622 at this time.
Second.[1714.78]